Good evening, welcome to the regular Planning Commission meeting, Grand Blank Township, December 7th, 2017. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the Pride of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Planning Commission members present this evening, we have Mr. Mansour, Ms. Coulter, Mr. Goldie, Mr. Brown, Mr. Gellings, Mr. Banderski, Mr. Horsa, Mr. Yoncho, and from our planning consultant, Giffords Webster, we have Ms. Jill Bame. Next item on our agenda is approval of this evening's agenda. Any changes proposed? I have one thing that I think I'd like to add, and that is an item to discuss the January Planning Commission meeting, whether we're going to have one or not. So I'm just thinking we'll put that in under Committee Reports at the end. I guess it would be an item 8E.
With that change, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Motion by Mr. Banderski, that was support by Mr. Yoncho. Any other discussion? If not, vote is in order. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes 8-0. Next item is approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of November 2nd, 2017.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the minutes of the last meeting as in front of you, and found everything to be in order. So I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of November 2nd, 2017.
Motion by Mr. Banderski, is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Mansour. Any other comments, changes? If not, vote is in order. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes 8-0. Next item on our agenda is an opportunity for public comment. And I don't think we have anything this evening that has a public hearing. Is that correct? So if you would like to address the Planning Commission directly about anything, now would be the time. Anyone in the audience that would like to address the Planning Commission?
Yes, I would. My name is Jim Bush, I'm at 5243 Luthbridge Road. I want to take a minute and talk about the Sam's Club proposal. Was at the Township Board meeting when they presented. And initially, I want to say I'm for it. I am for the gas station there, but I'm concerned on the location that they proposed. That location has a lot of traffic through it, and there's actually two entrances into the complex. I would propose that we look at an alternate location, possibly to the side of Sam's Club. I was actually there on Black Friday, shopping with my wife. There was almost no one parked on the side. And I say that for a couple reasons. One, I think it's a bigger area, they could put it in. And two, I think the traffic flow would be better. And I also commute a lot to Bloomfield Township, where I work. And I stop at Sam's Club and get gas frequently. There's always cars lined up waiting to get in. Where if you put it at the initial location, you're going to have the tendency of cars back up into traffic. And I think that would cause a problem. Where if you move it to the other side, if it does back up, you're not going to be backing up into traffic. So I just want you to think about that and consider that when you're going through the proposal.
Got a question for you. When you say the other side, I'm not...
When you're facing Sam's Club to the right that faces Saginaw, so there's a strip right there. Okay, right up against Saginaw. Almost no one parks there, and even on Black Friday, there's a handful of cars there. And I guess it's probably more employees parking there. That would be my suggestion. If you look at that area, it's about the same size as what they have in Auburn Hills for their Sam's Club. So you could actually put it there and have the same size, and allow the traffic not to back up into the through fair. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any comments? Anyone else like to address the Planning Commission? If not, we'll close the public comment portion, bring it back up to the Planning Commission. Next item on our agenda is correspondence. We have a planning and zoning magazine, I guess we call it, in our packet. Any other correspondence beyond that? I know there were a couple from our planner, but we'll get to those later on the agenda. Next item on our agenda is old business. And under old business, we have special land use 17-004, place of worship, Seventh Day Adventist Church. This was tabled from, is that correct? It was October, it's been that long? Is there someone here that's going to make any kind of presentation regarding this? Come up to the podium, please.
We had previously submitted...
Excuse me, please state your name and address.
My name is Sid Smith. My address is 2382 Howser Road, Holly, Michigan. I am the building chairman for the Grand Blank Seventh Day Adventist Church. And we had proposed using the old Academy site, Warwick Academy, to reuse two of the buildings there. One is, the middle building is a sanctuary house, house of worship. There's an existing modular unit to the Far East side that we would like to temporarily use as classrooms for the kids. And there's a gymnasium in the back that we would like to use as a gymnasium. And then there's an existing house that connects to that gymnasium. And it is in quite bad shape, and we are proposing to remove that and tear it down. And based on our site plan review that we gave a little bit earlier, we have met those things that you asked us to do. I do have written access easement for the parcel that states that we have access to that property from Warwick Trail. We had a lighting study done, and that was submitted. We provided the lot coverage calculations that was put on the plan sheet. We provided a dumpster detail enclosure. There happens to be a concrete dumpster pad at the back of the property from the previous owners. As far as the easement for the sign, that was to be done as part of the sign approval, which we would do at a future date. And then we were to provide a landscaping plan, which we did, which showed all the plans that we proposed to do on that. So with that, I'd like to ask permission that we abstain, use special land use permit to be used, that property be used as a house of worship for the Seventh Day Adventist Church.
Ms. Bame, did you want to comment on anything in the Giffords Webster report?
Only to highlight the, I think really the only outstanding issue was regarding the Planning Commission's consideration of the landscaping and the dumpster enclosure. And you had submitted a drawing of the wood fence dumpster enclosure. And that's up to the Planning Commission. The ordinance does require a masonry screen wall, but allows the Planning Commission to permit the wood fence...
Yes.
Depending the location, if you feel that that is sufficient screening.
If I could add to that, the entire site has a wood fence around it. And so what we propose to do is enclose that dumpster with the same type of wood fence that is currently around the entire site. And I showed a picture of what it is that we were planning there.
And I think that was about it. We had...
You also requested an address. Actually, it was Mark White. We checked with your assessing department, and I said that that would have to go through the post office.
Oh, right.
And the post office will only deal with the owner. So we plan on purchasing the property here in the next few weeks. And when we do that, we will pursue getting an address change at that time.
I guess, Ms. Bame, maybe you can refresh my memory. I know we went through, we did a site plan approval. I think that was a preliminary, is that correct?
We did, and that was on November 2nd.
So we're here for the special land use, and then there will be a follow-up site plan review? Or is that going to be...
You can do that all together, if you like, or you can do...
I just didn't see it on the agenda.
You actually can't approve the special land use until you've approved the final site plan. So those would have to be done together.
Okay, I just didn't see it on the agenda, the site plan.
They would be, yeah, they would be together.
Okay, any comments from Planning Commission members? Mr. Mansour?
Chairman Gelling. Ms. Bame, I guess I have two questions on this. If you could help, probably most knowledgeable. Within the current, was it medium-density, multiple-family dwelling zone, are there any other instances in which this type of use is, you know, in that kind of a zoned area?
You know, that's a very good question that I don't have an answer to. What I can do is I can show, hopefully, if I can connect, I could show you the zoning map, which we don't currently have up here, and show you the areas that are designated for MDM. And maybe that'll... Others who know where some of these places are. So let's see if this comes up.
But in general, a place of worship is allowed in just about any zoning district, correct?
Yeah, I know, we live in Ottawa Hill subdivision, and there's a church in the subdivision, right off Benton Road.
So it's not incompatible with what we've done in the past?
No, the ordinance allows it. In general terms, a special land use to say, is there anything unique here?
So while it comes up, I have one other question. The issue raised in your November 29th letter about the building, I mean, sorry, the fire department interaction with this, they'd made some comments, it's just on the second page, about the condition of the buildings. And is there any further action required there?
The applicant, we've talked about this, that all of the requirements that we had, the Planning Commission had set forth of the previous application would apply here. And you've reviewed that, and you're amenable to all of those.
We would take care of all that, regardless of whether...
Mr. Goldie? In my understanding that to get a certificate of occupancy, they're going to have to do anything that's substandard. Bring everything up to code to get any...
Correct, yes.
They'll cover it in that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clarify the point that you raised earlier. Are we looking at just the special land use, or are we also looking at approval of the final, our site plan?
I think based on the discussion, if we... We might as well go through and look at the site plan first, and then take a separate vote on each. You've taken a look at the list of items that we had, and you're satisfied, the only item you're saying we need to discuss would be in regard to the enclosure for the dumpster?
Correct, yes.
I guess my comment is the location where it's at, and there's significant landscape screening up front of that as well. I'm comfortable with the location and the fence enclosure.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, what are your thoughts? I don't have any problems with what the petitioner is suggesting for the enclosure itself, that it would match the already existing fencing. So I know that's not normally what we would like to see, but I think in this instance, it does make some sense.
Personally, I concur, but... Anybody else have any comments? Ms. Yoncho?
So the Site Plan Review Committee approved the plan with these seven conditions.
Yes, preliminary.
I'm assuming that they looked at the parking situation, or is there sufficient parking on site?
And the applicant was going to be repairing and resurfacing the parking lot?
Yes. And that's shown on the, I think it's C2 on the landscaping plan. We call out the parking, the new parking, and striping on that. And there was a requirement on how many parking spaces we would need based on the size church we have. I think we met all those conditions.
Tried to come up with a longer list, but we couldn't.
We did work very diligently at that, Mr. Chairman.
I have to say that anything would be an improvement in that area.
Almost anything, yeah.
Yeah, we met with the demo contractor. And, you know, we're just waiting on a price because you have to have asbestos inspection. There's asbestos, and the cost goes up. That would be one of the first things we did. And I think we spoke with some of the residents around there, and they would really like to see that building come down. And it's unsafe, we want it to come down as soon as we can.
And the, all three buildings will be brought up to code, correct?
Chairman Gelling?
Mr. Mansour?
So is the next step here, from a site plan review standpoint, someone making a motion to accept it? Is that...
Yes, with whatever conditions that we may still need to put on there. One, I would identify that we find the enclosure acceptable as presented. I think I would maybe also include that just there's verification of the items on the list previously are checked off by Giffords Webster, just to confirm that everything is... I haven't seen everything, that's all, so... So if there isn't any other discussion, then a motion would be in order at this time?
Mr. Chairman, regarding special land use number 17-004, place of worship, the Seventh Day Adventist Church would be at 9127 South Saginaw Street. And their request for the special land use be approved based upon all of the requirements that we've talked about that are listed in the November 29th report from Giffords Webster to the Planning Commission.
Mr. Brown, I want to clarify, what I'd like to do is take a vote first on the site plan.
I'll make that motion. Site plan, was it 1032? Is that what the reference is? Is it her letter?
Yes, 1032.
Seventh Day Adventist Church at 9127 South Saginaw. Recommend approval per the conditions in this letter or any previous conditions.
So this board can make the approval of the site plan. So you're making a motion for approval. And I would... We discussed this, but I just want to clarify, your motion includes that you find the submitted enclosure for the dumpster acceptable, and then you would also like to have Giffords Webster go through the site plan, a previous site plan review list and their letter, just to confirm that everything's been...
Yes.
Got a motion by Mr. Goldie. Support by Mr. Yoncho. Any other discussion? If not, vote is in order. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes 8-0. Now would be...
Now's appropriate. I was lumping them together, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. So in this case, regarding special land use number 17-004, the place of worship, Seventh Day Adventist Church at 9127 South Saginaw, I make a motion to approve that special land use.
Motion by Mr. Brown, is there support for that?
Support.
I think I saw Mr. Mansour first. So there's a motion by Mr. Brown, supported by Mr. Mansour. Are there any conditions on this, anyone I didn't hear?
Well, Mr. Chairman, there was an item mentioned in the planner's report on the setbacks, basically. It indicates that all of the buildings are existing, and so some of the setbacks aren't in conformity with the requirements of zoning ordinance, but also explains that, you know, the pre-existing use was the school, which wasn't subject to our, you know, zoning ordinance. So I don't, I mean, I... We have some discretion to, you know, to do it, or to approve this, even though they don't meet the setback requirements. I wouldn't have any problem with that.
We do have the discretion. Do you want to include something in it? If in the future, any new buildings are constructed, they would have to comply with the current ordinance?
Yeah, I would like to add that.
Goldie, do you find that acceptable in your motion?
Yes.
Any other discussion? If not, a vote is in order regarding special land use. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes 8-0.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda would be new business. We have, under the planned unit development at Heritage Park, a proposed amendment. Is someone here that's going to make a presentation regarding that?
Good evening, my name is Tyler Tennant, and I'm outside Miami's counsel for Sam's Club. Don't really have a formal presentation, because I understand that this particular hearing is to simply review the proposal, and then perhaps make a recommendation for a public hearing before the Planning Commission. This is a, you're familiar with the Sam's Store, but our proposal is to construct a six-dispenser fueling station with an overhead canopy and a small kiosk. There won't be any retail component to it. It'll be similar to other Sam's Clubs that you might have been familiar with. This facility will be compliant with all of the township's dimensional and design standards. Just a few days ago, I received from our engineer, who couldn't be here tonight, he's in Arkansas, a plan about, or at least a proposed plan, and maybe Ms. Bame, you also have received it, the circulation. If you haven't received that, I have some copies of that I could pass out. And this may alleviate the concern of the person who commented during the public comment about traffic backup. But you'll see that all of the, the circulation is internal. There's no connection to the outside roadways.
Go ahead, Zell. Chairman. Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I didn't understand it first.
And in the materials that I think you have, this was subject to a PUD agreement executed in 2004. At that time, the PUD agreement specifically said no, no gas stations. We've looked through the minutes of that, and there wasn't any particular reason for that, at least was in the minutes. Some of the trustees may have specific recollection of that. I wasn't around at the time on this particular project. But the primary reason for the addition of this now, some 12 years later, is because in recognition of the significant changes that are occurring in the retail environment. Beginning in the late 1990s and accelerating to the present, there's been pressure on big-box stores to add fueling facilities. As a matter of fact, I don't believe there aren't many Sam's Clubs anymore that are built without fueling facilities. And stores like Krogers and Costco and other big-box retailers are adding fueling facilities to their store. It's basically a drive's membership. And it is something that's pretty ordinary for big-box stores these days, whereas in 2004, it probably wasn't. We submitted some materials that summarize all of this, but really, I think the purpose tonight is to, I can take your questions back to Sam's Club in preparation for a public hearing. We received Ms. Bame's report. It had some suggestions in it, and we're going to follow up with her on those. Those are all good suggestions, and I know that the folks that are involved with this project are interested in moving forward and working with Ms. Bame on that. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them if I can answer.
Any immediate questions?
Well, just some, go ahead.
Oh, I just have a procedural question. This went before the Township Board in...
November.
November, okay. And then what are we being asked to do? To make a recommendation?
This is, yes, this is for initial request for a PUD anytime and there's a change proposed. It goes to the Township Board, and they make a determination as to whether they feel it's a minor change or a major change. And in this case, because it was specifically excluded two different places in the development agreement, the Township Board felt it was a major change, and that requires the process to essentially start over again. So this is the conceptual discussion about the proposal. And if you are so inclined, you can schedule a public hearing. If you feel like you have enough information, schedule a public hearing for whatever your next mandate might be. Which maybe we should have moved that discussion up ahead.
Well, I would expect the responses to your memo and working with our engineers. It's not going to be first part of January.
Maybe February.
Yeah, I think so.
Just as a comment, I think a public hearing makes a lot of sense to me, because, I mean, this is a major project that when it was originally proposed, generated, you know, a huge amount of public concern. So I would certainly like to hear what the public has to say about this proposal. Especially since we've had some gas, very controversial gas stations.
We've had about 50/50 in terms of controversial and not-so-controversial, at least in terms of the way they were handled by the applicants themselves. But there are some other issues, but you had a question.
I just wanted to get your input. If there's something on your report you wanted to kind of highlight.
Well, I did want to talk about the process. I'm glad that you brought that up. And then the gentleman's comments about the circulation was a concern that we share as well. And we appreciate the schematic of the circulation. And what you've given us this evening, and we'll share that with you if you're interested later, is really just relating to the gas station itself. And I think what we would expect to see is really how the entire circulation on the site works, because we know that there's some challenges that you have there that have appeared over time. And there have been some changes since the original PUD was laid out and established. So that should be addressed in terms of really the internal traffic and circulation. We put that in our note as well. Those were the big things. The market information that illustrates both the need for the fueling station in this location, you gave, I think, with your information, at least in terms of the fact... Well, I guess the market information that you provided was really very specific to how it benefits Sam's Club, which is fine. But I think it also should demonstrate that there aren't any other gas stations in the immediate area that can serve this and the need that you find in this location. And that evidence that such a use won't detract from other uses in the shopping center. So those would be our primary concerns about information that we would like to see before the Planning Commission.
One of the other things, if I recall correctly, is a traffic impact statement.
Correct.
Guessing that may be part of what would take you till February.
Yeah, it'll take a while.
Mr. Mansour?
Yeah, Chairman Gelling. So we had the discussion about this, and Ms. Bame brought it up just a minute ago about specific exclusions in the original PUD on this. And I don't know if anyone has any of the background of that or whether we're still kind of digging into that, but I'd be interested to know what was the rationale behind specifying that.
Well, at the time, I think the township, and those of you who are on the Planning Commission, please speak up about this issue. But I think there was a real concern that there was an opportunity here to do something really unique and special and very high-quality that focused more on the retail user... that focused more on the retail user, not as much as to being an auto-oriented shopping center. So it was, I, I don't know that I would go as far as to say it was pedestrian-oriented, but at least not automobile-oriented. And so you saw at the time, an exclusion of drive-through uses and an exclusion of many types of auto-related services, including gas stations. There were some exceptions, I think, at the time for the uses along the back, like the Walmart that had the auto center, because that was going to be in the back, and it didn't really, it wasn't a separate standalone use. And so I think that was the, the thought process at the time, is that this would be more of a retail destination-type shopping center rather than an auto-oriented shopping center. But as you know, the drive-through, we have the Panera Drive-Thru, that was something that the planning commission approved two years ago, I think.
Yeah.
About one or two.
If my memory serves me correctly, it was Chairman Gelling and myself are the only two people who are.
The old geezers.
And Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Johnson is not here.
Mr. Johnson is not here, but he was also.
No, I think what Ms. Bame has summarized is probably accurate. We had some concerns, I think the township board as well, so. I've got a question, and I don't know, I think when this development was first put in, it was anticipated, and I don't know what the ratio is of traffic that comes in off of Saginaw versus Dort, but I, it seems like Dort was, highway was viewed definitely as a secondary. I see an awful lot of traffic that comes down Dort Highway with access to that side, but it seems like it's difficult at night to see this entrance.
Very difficult.
Yes.
Yeah, you're right.
It needs some sort of additional, even if it's low-level lighting, lower-level lighting, something to identify that, because it's, it's easy, you see people starting to make a turn in the wrong location at night. And I don't know if that's something that can be addressed as part of this or not.
Yes, absolutely. Well, and that's directly tied in with the gas station because it's so close to that entrance. So I think that's definitely something that you'd be asked to.
Yeah, we could definitely look at that. Yeah, I was unaware of that issue.
I don't know what the answer is. I'm not saying I want a bunch of high, you know, super illuminate the area, but it's, you're almost past it and slamming on your brakes if you're coming from the north.
I think it's because the illusion that if you come up to that going south, you just think, the light, the light, the light's got to be the way to get in. And you go, oh, there it is. And that's, it's just a unique, all the entrances before the light.
Chairman.
Go ahead.
I was, I was going to say, it's going to be even more important as the Dort Highway extension comes on and becomes more use.
Exactly what I was.
So.
Because that's a state road right now. And I don't think there's any illumination along it, or little or none, along Dort Highway as it exists right now. And I do agree.
Not sufficient, that's for sure.
Yeah, it's, it's certainly insufficient from my perspective.
I think as Mr. Goldie said, the majority of the light and the signal is a little bit further south, and the actual entrance gets missed. So, and I, I think when this was originally laid out, it was anticipated that a, the vast majority of traffic was going to come off of Saginaw Street, but I think as local residents learned how to get here, there's a high percentage that are coming in off of Dort Highway. Something to take back, I guess, as part of that.
You bet.
Mr. Horshe.
I have a question. Is it our requirement or responsibility to look at this from a use standpoint, the necessity for another gas station on this under township?
Absolutely.
Yes. Because, you know, when I drive around there, and I drove through there and looked at this, there are a lot of gas stations within a mile square, a lot of them. And I'm just curious, what's the need? Or is there a need, or is this?
I think that's, we want to get, get a little bit more information. They're going to present some market information, get a traffic study. I think our major item for us to do tonight is set a public hearing date, bring the public in, get their input, and, valid point. Mr. Bandersky?
Mr. Chairman, looking at the analogy of Costco, one of the needs would be a lower price. That, you know, Sam's Club would have a lower price gas, and people would go out of their way from the other local gas stations to come for a nickel lower, a quarter or something like that. So that'll be a driving force to customers, I think.
Mr. Bandersky, can I build upon your, if you're done?
Yes, sir.
I was over in Flint Township today, or yesterday, I should say, doing some, running some errands over there, and for, I was near where the Sam's Club and Walmart is on Corona Road and all of that sort of stuff, and I'm kind of building what you're saying. And I'm, I'm a price-sensitive kind of person, as it relates to gas or maybe everything. And so I, I was there and I filled my car up, and, my wife's car, I should say. And I, the price for regular gas there was $2.29. And I looked around, because right around where on Corona Road, there, like Mr. Horshe was saying, there were six to eight gas stations with, probably within a quarter mile of Sam's Club. And what I observed is that because of the price sensitivity that Sam, Sam's Club gas stations emit, it's driving the other gas stations to try to compete and driving their price lower. So I said earlier, I noticed that it was $2.29. On the way here tonight, I began looking at the gas stations coming from where I live, down Saginaw Street, and the same exact price was literally at every one of these stations for regular and Grand Blank is $2.59. I, that, that, I, I don't think I had, you have to be a big mathematician, but I look at not necessarily so much about the gas station, but if a gas station were there like a Sam's Club, it's going to cause competition within the community. And frankly, if you're saving 20 or 30 or 40 cents compared to what you're paying right now, that's putting that money right in your billfold or your pocket that can be spent at other retail establishments in the community. And it looks to me, I use GasBuddy a lot, Grand Blank is probably the highest in the entire county.
It's the worst.
And I'm going, what's the deal here?
It'll also drive the others down.
No, it absolutely will, Mr. Bandersky. It will. It's going to force these people who are now charging 20 and 30 or 40 cents a gallon more, because you live in Grand Blank, to compete. There's nothing wrong with competition.
So it sounds like you're suggesting that we schedule a public hearing.
There we go.
Well, if you want, those words of mine might be for sure.
I'm just, just interpreting what I'm hearing.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Anshul.
In regard to the circulation situation, I'm a little bit concerned about the fill trucks and their ability to maneuver in these tight quarters. Are these parking spaces that, in the adjacent, double-sided, are those going to be eliminated? Will those still be parking spaces? I see that we're utilizing the parking spaces immediately next to the proposed station. Those are going to be entrances, but, you know, there's, those trucks have higher turning radiuses, much higher turning radiuses. And I wondered what the proposed hours for the station to be open would be, and if there was possibility to have a restriction on the fill hours for the trucks.
Anything's possible. I think right now, we're just giving some advice, some items that should be addressed.
I don't know all the answers, but I know that the proposed hours, and we went through it with the board, and I think it's like an hour before, an hour after the store is open. But we certainly could, and I know at other locations, we have limited truck fill hours. In terms of the parking spaces, I know that we're losing a few, that we proposed to lose a few back there. I don't know the exact configuration.
So it might be good to show the truck routing on the, on the site plan.
Turning radius, definitely.
Turning radius, exactly.
Yeah, the turning radius, right.
One of the other issues that has come up frequently over the last year or two have been overnight parking in the parking lot. And that's a concern of the township.
Yeah, I know Sam's Club prohibits it, especially in communities like yours that don't allow it. So if we need to up the enforcement on that, or whatever we can do, I'm sure we're, be more than glad.
I've complained many times, it looks like a truck rodeo.
Yeah, it's that good.
Really does.
Chairman Gelling?
Yes, sir.
I suppose this will come up at maybe a little bit later time, but this, the actual physical location of this sets right now on, or would set on some green area that's, that's just to the east of the CCs, et cetera. And so I guess one of the questions would come up, is there some way to kind of give, I don't know, kind of give some thought to some kind of decorative or some, something there to kind of, you know, kind of make it as, as less obtrusive as possible? So, I'm sure.
Maybe like some landscaping?
Landscaping, or, I mean, something, I, I don't know.
Guessing you might want to go above what the minimum ordinance required.
Yeah. Anyway, thank you.
Anyone else? So do we have a, a motion to?
February date for your, February, oh, it's February 1st. Yeah, February 1st.
That date work?
I think we can do that.
You'd need your information in by?
Mid-January.
First week, first week of January.
First week of January. I will ask if we need to, when you set the hearing tonight, is that not movable? If we need another two weeks?
I was just thinking that maybe what we do say is February 1st or earliest time that the applicant is ready after that date.
That sounds big sense.
It does.
Great, yes, we do too.
And forgive me, Mr. Chairman, I think you are prepared to do a traffic impact study, correct?
That's what we have been requested to do.
Right, and present that to us.
Right.
Can you get that to us in advance of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
For the Christmas season.
Yeah, that's a good point. I don't know when we would do that.
I don't think you'll get it back.
No, but we'll be able to observe firsthand.
Actual traffic.
firsthand.
And I don't know when it's feasible to do a traffic study, how quickly we can do it. I know we would want to do it, you know, beginning after the first of the year.
They're going to go out there and do.
Normal conditions, but.
Somebody's going to go out there and do counts during some point in.
And this would be internal traffic study as well?
The requirement is for trip generation, and that was for, so that, we had it as relative to the shopping center and pass-by trips on the two abutting roadways, so both on Dort and Saginaw.
Both on Dort and Saginaw.
And then internal.
And internal, okay.
I guess I would maybe make a suggestion that you also address why this location versus another location.
Will do.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I was just going to make that point. When we had a public hearing, there should be some kind of consideration, and then yes or no. I mean, this is why we could, if we wanted to, or this is why we can't. Because it's easy access off the road in the location at east of Sam's, but there may be some other compelling reasons why that's not a good spot.
Chairman Gelling, a question about location of this. I guess, the specific location of this, does it make a difference to the, I guess, the people that kind of own the property, right? Is, this is a?
Yeah, it's a lease. We, we have right now permission from the landowner for this location. To my knowledge, there's no other location being, that has been considered, but we could make an inventory of those and bring those back to the planning commission.
Okay, thank you.
If I recall, maybe Mr. Gelling can recall, the one parcel that would be, let's see if I can come up with it correctly. You know, the, the portion where CC's Pizza is at, and then directly to the, I guess that would be south, behind it, that parcel was designated for a restaurant, was, am I right?
That's kind of how it originally was presented, yes.
And of course, nothing has been developed there. Is that a parcel that would fit? I mean, are you, maybe you're not prepared to maybe answer?
We're not involved in that parcel, so I don't know.
I'm sorry?
We don't lease that parcel, as far as I know.
Oh, I see.
It's not something that we can build on.
Oh, I see, okay.
I don't know who owns it. It probably is our landlord, but I just don't know. That would be closer to Dort Highway, is that?
It would be here versus here.
Yeah.
Be on Dort Highway.
Actually, very close to it.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clarify. Basically, we're going to have a public hearing, and then essentially, we have to make like two separate determinations. First, whether or not we should recommend an amendment to allow a gas station, and then if so, all these other, you know, issues regarding the location or landscaping or any other conditions if we do decide.
Right, so you'll make a recommendation to the township board on the amendment to the PUD agreement. Township board will take action, and then should they approve that change, then the final site plan approval rests with you.
Is it possible for us to do site plan and PUD at the same time? I think we didn't want to do that at first.
It can be, you could, we can be reviewing your site plan, but.
Okay.
But the planning commission can't approve the site plan until the township board approves the PUD change.
Okay, we'll keep you, keep providing details on the site plan during that time period.
Yeah, but we, if you provide all your information, township is prepared to schedule the meetings and move you along, so.
Like to make a motion?
Well, as you said, Mr. Chairman, I think I kind of did that. Earlier. So, let's see, there actually isn't a case number, is there?
No.
No, no.
So in this case, I guess what we're looking for is a, a motion to?
Oh, no, we do.
Hold a public hearing?
It's PUD 17001.
The case number.
Oh, there is, yeah. Sorry, I was looking at the.
Schedule a public hearing.
Yeah, schedule a public hearing for.
Motion amendment to the.
Yes.
PUD.
Yes, thank you.
We have a motion by Mr. Brown, support.
I'll support.
By Mr. Goldie. Any further discussion? Now, I guess the motion that you're proposing is to schedule a public hearing for February 1st.
It is, or whenever the petitioner is, is prepared.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The motion is for a hearing.
Yes.
Not whether or not.
Correct.
We're looking at it, and anything beyond a hearing, public hearing.
For the public hearing, only to get additional information to be able to make an informed decision.
And so the public hearing will be set, and there'll, there'll be notice for that. It's 15 days prior to the meeting, so regardless of when that is, people will be notified.
So certainly by mid-January, we'll know whether the February 1 date will work.
Yeah.
Yep.
Have you, just as another, since we're still in discussion, have you, is there any communication with any of the other tenants in the shopping center? Are you able to do that, especially the little outlet right next to you?
Yeah, I'm not aware of that.
Okay, that might be something that you want to pursue.
Okay.
Okay, we had a motion to schedule a public hearing by Mr. Brown, support by Mr. Goldie. Any further discussion before we vote? Now, a vote is in order. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes eight zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is committee reports. Mr. Mansur, our township board.
So, I'm going to, I'd like to defer till I, till after the planning and zoning update from Ms. Bame, please.
I understand that. I guess you got moved up on the agenda, Ms. Bame.
Okay, well, you can make a note.
All materials. Okay. All right, I have several pieces of communication for you.
First, I'm going to go back to something that came up last month that you asked me to look at, and that was the Burton, City of Burton's draft master plan. So, I was able to go on to the, we had that issue where they had the map. So, I was able to go on to the, we had that issue where they had the map that you couldn't read in the document, so I printed out their, their proposed future land use map.
This is a packet?
That's one for you, you take one and pass it down, sorry.
A one?
Yes. And then I printed out the Grand Blank Township, our current future land use plan. And then, sorry, if I had gotten here earlier, I would have passed all of this out for you. And that. So I did take a look at it, and then what I actually did, and I didn't print out this for everybody, but I can pass it down if you all want to take a look at it, I actually just took two, the two and clipped them together and compared across Maple Avenue. And then I did go through the document, and I brought it with me in case anybody has any questions about it, but I thought there were a couple of points that were important to note about their, their master plan. One was their median district that they have along Saginaw Road, and they've had that document for some time, but they were just referencing it in the master plan, but they talked about the south district, which is between Scottwood Avenue and Maple Avenue, and that is right adjacent to the northern boundary of Grand Blank Township. And they talk about how they wish to improve that over time, and include additional gateway element items at that district, their south district, and they had a couple of other ones. And it seems like that would be a nice improvement for both the city and the township, and I think that's also compatible with the township Saginaw corridor plan, which is several years old, but I think still very relevant. They do include a proposed pathway map that shows the proposed pathways in the adjacent communities, which I think is nice. They'll be talking about their own pathways. They did have one little extension that would go east along, or west along Maple, east of Saginaw. Let's see, that's not right, it's west of Saginaw, but, so that was one little area that they had shown of connectivity. So, there's opportunities for more in the future, I would hope, but that was a good, a good thing that they include. They did a housing analysis for future housing demand, and I didn't have the, access to the appendix, which had all of the housing analysis in it, and their summary didn't say what the time period was, it had a projection of a lot of units over time, demand for a lot of housing. And Grand Blank is expected in their analysis to do well in that regard as well. Like I said, I don't know the time period in which that was forecast, but they spoke about detached homes, single-family homes, duplex, triplex units, and larger format, like apartment building type housing. They also mentioned that there's a lot of starter home scenarios in the City of Burton, and how, and they recognize that they often, when people are moving up, will come to Grand Blank Township, and so they, they recognize that, and they're working on strategies to retain homeowners and renters in their community too. And I just thought that was interesting and would point that out. And then we looked at the adjacent land uses along Maple Avenue, and they have a variety of things, particularly west of, and I don't know why I keep using the wrong directions, but I don't know, I said it right, the west side.
The west is correct.
That are fairly compatible. They're a little bit more intense on the Burton side than on the Grand Blank side, but I think there are some nodes that are, that line up pretty well, including along Dort Highway. It seems as though, for the most part, they're pretty much similar, and we didn't find there to be any issues with the City of Burton's plan being incompatible with the current master plan for Grand Blank Township.
That review.
That's bad. Mr. Mansour asked a question about DAS, which is Distributed Antenna Systems. We gave you a memo back, well, actually, I don't know if you saw our memo, we gave the superintendent a memo about distributed antenna systems, and these are the small, the medium-sized, additional equipment that go on utility poles in rights, through these rights-of-way. There has been some interest in working on ordinance language at the township to address that, from, primarily from an aesthetic standpoint, but also address it from a franchise and licensing and fees standpoint. Since we've talked about doing that, there's been some legislation proposed, both in the House and the State Senate, and I believe there's some federal legislation as well. What this legislation will do, if it's, if it's approved, in particular, Senate Bill 637, really limits the local control over these types of equipment additions to utility poles in the community right-of-way. Advocates for it suggest that it will improve the ability of providers to install this equipment in the rights-of-way and bring internet to communities in a faster fashion. Those who are opposed, which include the Michigan Municipal League, Michigan Association of Planning, Michigan Townships Association, say you're stripping the local communities of control over their rights-of-way. So I included some of that summary there, and I had to keep, every time I updated it, I'd have to update it again, because again, some committee would have, had approved it or voted it out of committee. But we're suggesting that, and this was in relation to Mr. Mansour's question about do we need to be doing something about ordinance language, that we really ought to just wait and see, because it sounds like this is moving very quickly, and either by the end of the year or the beginning of 2018, it, it sounds like this legislation is moving forward quickly. So I just wanted to update you on that. Does anybody have any questions about that?
I'd like to have a visual.
Well, I have a visual, as a matter of fact.
Okay.
There was, there was some communication from a group of, a variety of municipal officials, and there was a letter that went to Senate, Senator Knopf, and what their visual is, that they have provided, is that the size that's allowed, that's allowed by the legislation is roughly the size of a refrigerator. And that's pretty significant, to be hanging off-
Yeah, it is.
-a variety of utility poles in the community right-of-way. I can pass that down if you want to read that a little bit more, and I can email that out to you as well, sure.
I guess the part that I didn't understand was the six cubic feet in volume, and then all other items associated with that, 28 cubic foot. But six isn't too bad, but 28's getting to be like you said.
28's pretty big.
It's a pretty good sized refrigerator.
It's a good sized fridge, yeah.
And are, are they always a box, or?
No.
No.
They can look like ti- typical old-fashioned TV antenna, or what might they?
They sometimes, they look like round things too, and, yeah, they come in different sizes to me, and the provider what they are, but.
I think the Michigan Farm Bureau is one of the organizations that may be behind this, because they're, they're trying to hit, you know, rural areas more access to high speed.
Right.
And I wonder if, there might be a compromise so that, depending on the size of the community, different things like that.
Yeah, if you only knew someone on the Farm Bureau or related to them.
I'll try and figure it out.
Good.
It was 28 cubic feet, and it's still three by three by three.
Yeah, not that.
Huge. Three by three by three's 27.
Yeah.
So would this, is this what you're talking about?
Yeah, so you're saying we may not have much-
We may not have much authority to make any regulations. And I think what, the real, the crux of it is removing the local control, and I think that most people would support expansion of wireless, especially, we all have wireless devices, we have many, multiple internet devices, we have the Internet of Things, we have products in our home now that rely on Wi-Fi connections, so everybody's interested in that, but at the same time, these are visual intrusions into the right-of-way, into our public line of vision, and there should be some way that the local community can control what that looks like.
Big push is gonna be now, we've all read it, people are cutting the cable to streaming.
Yeah.
ESPN's firing hundreds of people every three months because they've lost 13 million subscribers. And then, from what I'm hearing, because I'm getting ready to cut it, I've done a bunch of research, but now, the internet companies like Comcast knows you're gonna cut their cable, so your internet rate's going like this.
Yeah, it, it may be, you know, we may have asked for this, brought this on ourselves, but it's intere-, it's interesting from its, its restriction on local authority, and it's not the first, it's not even the only bill that's pending currently, or been discussed recently that does that, so it's something that we all need to be paying attention to. That was that one. Then, I have another handout for you. Another thing that Mr. Mansour asked about was master plan, and we actually talked about this a few months ago. So I have, this is a proposal, it's more of a scope of work, and I wanted to walk through it with you. It doesn't include, this is a draft, I should have put that on there, this is really something that I want your input into before we move it forward to the township board for their consideration, because I want to make sure that this is covering what you want to cover. And if there's specific study elements in here that you'd like to make sure we address, we can highlight that in the document itself. And I do want to call attention to the, this one picture on the inside cover of the supervisor doing ribbon cutting. I happened to find that, because I was looking for a picture of an industrial building, and I didn't have one in my own folder, so I went looking to see if I could find one, and I, I happened to Google Laird Technologies, and, and I opened this one up, and I said, "Oh, I know." And I would like to see, I, I just wanted to point that out, because I think it's nice to know that the township is doing things to highlight and promote businesses in the township, and I just think that's a nice, a nice photo. Because that shows also, I kind of picked those images because it represents all the things, not maybe all of the things, but it kind of touches on the things that I think are important to all of you, as I hear you discuss different land use decisions that you're asked to make. We talk about preservation of open space, we talk about homes and the quality of life here, and we also talk about business and economic development, and all of that goes hand in hand. Even on the front, on page three, we talk about the planning process objectives. I know that one of the things we talked about in the past was encouraging public participation. We kind of struggled with that in our last master plan update, and we have some new tools that I think are really exciting, that I think might help us generate more public participation. We would propose using different, a variety of tools, so still having open houses, still people are welcome to come to planning commission meetings when we are discussing the master plan, but also trying to do other things to reach out to the community in different ways, so that we try and hit a good cross-section of the community. Key planning topics, things that I think we've talked about, housing, land use, community health, and what it means to be an age-friendly community, and those are some of the things we've talked about, and if there's others, I want to make sure that we get those included. And then action strategies for implementing the master plan goals and objectives. And as we've talked about many times, a master plan is only as good as the, as it's implemented. In terms of visioning, we have a couple of different ideas on that. We have found, doing an initial visioning with elected appointed officials and key staff to be really helpful in sort of setting the tone for a master plan process, and so we would recommend township consider doing that, doing an online survey, really just asking some basic questions, like what's working, what needs work, what parts of the community do you think are doing well, what needs a little bit of help, where are areas that we need to be focusing on, and, and from that, then setting some guiding principles for the entire process. So we think that's something that's worth considering. Public engagement, as I said, I know you have talked about this in the past, so we would still do our public input survey, and we have gotten good responses from those in the past, but we also have two, we have two online platforms, one is called Picture This, and the other one is called Now Hear This. We have these two compatible online platforms that allow people to, say they went to Sam's Club, and they saw a bunch of cars parked out overnight, and they said, "You know what? That looks really tacky." They could take a picture of that and upload it to the platform and say, "This needs work." Likewise, they could take a picture of the little gazebo over there, that pavilion, pergola-covered walkway, and take a picture of that, upload it to the platform, and say, "I love this, I think we need to make sure we get more of this type of quality architectural elements in our shopping centers." When they're on a pathway, they could take a picture and upload that, "I love this pathway." It gives people an opportunity to be visual and, and tie it to a map, so we can see where people are commenting. The Now Hear This is the same thing essentially, but it's just as tech-based, people don't have to upload a picture.
How do they know where to do that, too? That's-
We would have all of that available on the township's website, or a project website if we do that. We are, we've actually begun doing that, the Picture This, we have it in a couple different communities right now, and it's, it's a little bit slow to get started because people need to get familiar with it, but when we've shown people how to do it, we, actually, we were at a, a community open house, and I was showing somebody how to, she wanted to show me something about the dog park, and I showed her how to do it on her phone, and the next thing I knew, the next day, there were like eight pictures on there of this dog park that she submitted, it was really cool. So those are kind of-
Are there other locations that make sense in addition to the township website or project site to let people know? I'm just asking a question.
Well-
I'm not sure how often people go to the township.
The township website?
Yeah.
And I know, I know there's a, there had been a Facebook page, I don't know if it's a official Facebook page, or if it's both. That's a good way to get information out to people. I think the other thing would be actually asking each of you and the township board members to send it out to 10 people that you know.
There's, there's a new app, I don't know if anybody here uses it, but it's called Next Door, and Next Door is seen to be gaining a lot of traction, and the police department, township police department uses that as well, to communicate things to people.
So those might be good places to at least announce it and then link it back to the website.
Drive it back to the Facebook.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, I mean, there are a lot of people that either, you know, aren't on Facebook, or, you know-
Right.
Don't use apps, and that, I'm wondering, but, I mean, everybody gets utility bills, for example, is there some way that, you know, maybe, with the next, you know, mailing of utility bills or something, you could also attach a little-
There's a tax bill, yeah.
You know, information about what we're doing with the master plan, because I mean, people will read, you know, the utility bill.
Right.
Well, some of the people in the township don't get utility bills from the township.
Oh.
But, just received on Monday, the township newsletter.
Tax form.
You know, that, that could be done that way, you know, a specific newsletter with that content.
Yeah.
Because I know in there, it talk, this is now Saturday, and it's, it talked about the rubbish pickup is done, as compared to having a little advance notice, maybe, to say, "I better get it out there." But anyway, that letter, which was a four-page letter-
Yeah, that would be-
I mean, doesn't it-
How often does that go out?
I don't know how often that goes out.
Quarterly, or?
Does it just go out with the tax bills? I can't remember.
Yeah, I think that's what it was, or, maybe twice.
The tax bills.
Maybe twice, because it talked in there about the taxes.
So maybe both, both mailings when they send out the tax forms.
Plus, we do have a newspaper in town. Have someone who's frequently here, writing great stories about what the planning commission is doing, so we can tap into that resource as well. And then obviously, the public open house, the standard tool that we, that we have used. We talked about, I think, a couple, several months ago, when we talked about scoping out a master plan, we had talked about maybe trying to do something in the different quadrants of the township, and I don't know if that's still something that you're interested in. And there's, I think there's a variety of ways we could do that, it doesn't necessarily have to be, like, just in saying that we want it to be cost-efficient and effective, but if that's something that the planning commission wants to explore, we can explore ways that we can do that, that are reasonable and effective.
I think one of the keys is if there are electronic ways for people to notice that in addition to having a visioning session might be sufficient. I guess, well, I'll let you continue to read this.
Okay. So the next couple of pages are just some illustrations of how those things work, and then we just get into the basic scope of work, and that's pretty straightforward. Task one is usually just the getting things- Task one is usually just getting things established, just creating the project website. Two is existing conditions. Three is the market analysis, and we did have the market analysis done in conjunction with the Technology Village conceptual development plan. And that was about a year ago, and to update that and make sure we're covering everything that we need to cover, I think is important. Looking at housing, specifically housing in neighborhoods as a focus of the plan, and then redevelopment strategies. So picking, and through the process of public input and the planning commission and the township board's analysis, identifying maybe three sites in the township that are worth an extra deep dive into how those could be redeveloped, both from the youth standpoint, using the information that we gather from the market analysis, as well as creating imagery that would support it, kind of like what we did for Tech Village, where we showed precedent images of how something might be developed and come up with a rough sketch of maybe a model of what a redevelopment might look like in that area. And so to do that in a couple of different ways. And then just developing the plan and creating an implementation strategy, and then having some way to illustrate that. And I just included an example of a poster that we did for the city of Novi last year at the end of their master plan process. So does this sound like what the planning commission is interested in talking about? Or are there things that we want to make sure that we highlight, that we add in, that we haven't added in?
Are you giving us a homework assignment with this?
I think so. And I think that was really, Mr. Mansour, is this...
Don't think so. Be specific.
Yes, I am. I may ask you to take a look and give it some thought. Is this what you had in mind when you asked for like a timeframe and an initial discussion about?
How long is this going to take? And what's...
Yeah. Well, I have that at the end. It's about, it's a little over a year-long process.
So that was a, so to answer your question, yes, this is the kind of document I think we wanted to start with here, to get an idea of what's involved with this, some of the steps, and importantly, on the back page, the timeline. Is it thinking that each one of these periods, these one, two, one through thirteen is like a month?
A month. I should have put that in there.
So, so I think it's important that we get this thing kicked off, because, you know, here we are, probably not going to get done until January of 19.
Right.
I mean, that, and I would, I'd like to, you know, I'd like to see if we could maybe accelerate that, so we could at least get it done in 18 at some, at some end of the year, whatever. But yes, this is, this was what I was looking for in terms of that. I'd also like to, I guess we'll flash through this a little bit more, but I think the early visioning is good, but I really want to create opportunities for the public, both residents and businesses, to have an opportunity to, you know, kind of get involved, get excited about it, and get some input, because they'll be ambassadors for, for us as we try and get this through the rest of the process. Thank you.
Nothing changed since we did our plan. There'd be no reason to really do any kind of updates. So I think I'd like to focus on what's changed since we, quite a few things have changed.
That's true.
Yeah. But I mean, to rest that as, okay, this has changed, how does that affect...
I mean, the, the other point that this ties into is that the township has a number of strategic initiatives regarding attractiveness for business, attractiveness for, you know, residents, and, and just kind of a number of these things that, you know, we ought to find a place to tie into the master plan, or to actually get concrete things in line to kind of go help us execute those.
Wasn't there a study done, 2020 vision or something, back in the 80s or 90s?
Dick Clark or Dick Gray.
Seems to me that...
Was it 2020 in the city?
With the city, right.
City, yeah.
Right. Seems to me that the thoughts and objectives of that period might be worth looking at, looking back at, and it kind of gave us a reference point, what those people looked at at that timeframe, and what we're trying to look at looking forward, what they thought, and how it kind of developed, and what we're talking about, and how it may develop or may not. Just thought, I was just curious whether that's worth looking at.
I think the vision 2020 back at that point was also the one of combining the township and the city.
City, yeah.
That was a big, a big focus of the 2020, which failed.
I think part of it also was to determine whether or not it would benefit the township to change its form of government, or its city structure for the purpose of obtaining different things like gasoline tax and so on for roads.
Ms. Baim, I apologize, I'm an engineer. The specific homework assignment is to read this document, mark it up where appropriate, and respond back to you. Is that correct?
Well, yes. Would the planning commission like to discuss it one more time before we submit something to township board? Well, then, yes.
Sorry, guys, yes.
This will be on the agenda in January or February meeting.
Yes. And we'll, we'll talk about it from the perspective...
Put that on the agenda, that's feedback from the proposal.
And then, is it, was it your direction that I look at what's changed since the 2012 master plan, or the amendment, the 2010?
I think they would, personally, I know they will. Not paying for it, so.
I think we could squeeze that in.
I don't have, I don't have the funds available.
It won't be completely foreign to me. I'll recognize some of the language in there. What I do think will be interesting are areas that we didn't really talk about. So that's kind of what I'm going to look for, what was missing from those. So some of what's changed, but what didn't we talk about then, that we should talk about now?
Obviously, the Dart Highway extension is something that's new. What's the impact of that?
I know that in one of your previous master plans, you had the big rural, like rural heritage corridor, like rural corridor, and you had an idea about large setbacks on certain roadways, and that didn't really go anywhere, but it'd be interesting to talk about that again. What I think will be interesting is, is, you know, I think the focus on housing will have changed since 2010, previous master plan.
At one point, we developed a list of goals and objectives, you know, some were short-term and some were longer-term, and many of them, you know, didn't go anywhere, basically. I think we ought to take a look at some of those and see whether or not we, you know...
Why didn't they?
Yeah. Why didn't they?
Yeah, and that would be part of the...
Or they're still something we should really focus on.
Definitely part of the update process for the master plan is a discussion of goals and objectives, and what's changed since the last plan. And that falls into like, kind of the middle. After you get a bunch of public input, and you've had some time to study existing conditions, and that's when we go into those goals and objectives and really look to see what still makes sense. Our efforts in master plans recently has been to consolidate goals, so that instead of having many goals, you have just a few, and then have the objectives really relate to those. And sometimes they can have cross-references to others.
Yeah, and I think at one, some previous meetings, too, we talked about not only shortening the goals, but making them more specific, instead of saying things like encourage, or, you know, things like that, something much more specific.
Yeah, and actually, for, for the city of Novi's master plan, we changed it to even within those zoning action items, draft zoning language that does this, this, and this. And then the next one was, we still wanted to encourage some things, but that came under a heading we called advocacy. And then, and then that shows who's doing that, who is encouraging. Is it, planning commission is encouraging, probably. Is it staff? Is it the township board? It might be. And so try to highlight those things, too.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so, and I'm kind of thinking now that there should be another category, another category heading that's standards and guidelines, because sometimes you may not want to make an actual ordinance, but you still want to guide people in the right direction, so that there might be that as an item as well.
As you were, Walter, it came to my mind, and maybe the reason some of these things, if you create a list, here's the stuff you want to do when we walk out, but there's no assignments, that, like you said, okay, this is what the planning commission is going to do, this is what township board's going to do, this is what staff's going to do, then probably, probably one of the reasons, anyway, why things didn't...
And, and one of the other issues, too, is that, that there were limited resources available for planning and implementation over the last several many years. So our, our thought, and when we started doing that with you, that exercise of prioritizing those objectives and trying to figure out, we did, we did knock out a couple easier things at the beginning of that. And then we got to the point where it just wasn't really, we didn't have the resources to be able to do some of the other things. But it's, we'd like to try to bring that back, so that it's easier to track those things.
We had a major focus on the Tech Village project.
Yeah, that was a big one to get done.
That took a lot of resources, yeah.
Chairman Gelling, two comments, please. First, in terms of the homework assignment, I think, you know, we're kind of, I guess, in my, my view, kind of getting to this a little bit later than I wanted to. So maybe there's more concrete homework assignments in terms of really looking at the things that this planning commission wants to prioritize in the, in the master plan, and with experience and in our background, and kind of getting those, you know, into the system a little bit earlier. And the second thing is, in terms of being able to make assignments, action, and getting things implemented, you know, the most cost-effective way for us to do that is to get these things into the budget process pretty early, so we're not having to add to it, and we can kind of integrate those into the existing funds. So that means that, you know, funds are available, people know what to do, they're on staff, et cetera. So again, that kind of leads us to try and kind of push this thing along, so that, you know, October, November, when we're looking at and approving budgets, that we have, that we have these things knitted together.
Yes, good point.
First, if you're to republish this, I have a suggestion.
Yes.
And I look at the page, page two, and there's a bunch of pictures.
There are.
But there's no references to what...
There is none. And you're just supposed to know where they are, because they're all in Gremlin Township.
Yes, and the same thing on page three, with the entrance to the park and so forth.
Those are from Gremlin Township as well, and I could tell you, Harry House should be recognized by everybody.
But I go back, I go to page seven, and of course, you show a picture of Rochester College.
Yes.
And then you have a little script underneath that identifying what it is. My only thought would be to have that kind of small under each of these pictures.
Okay.
Because not, I would guarantee that probably 50% or so people that look at this won't know what that is.
Okay.
Okay, just like the ribbon cutting.
Yes.
And that was covered in the Gremlin Township, Gremlin News.
Good point, yeah.
But just looking at that, and where is it? My suggestion.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Is there a way, that's more on you, but is there a way to get like email reminders every so often, "Hey, don't forget, you're supposed to get me..."
Yeah.
A lot of times, the stuff just kind of, with everything else, distractions you've got every day that...
Great idea.
Is out of our focus.
Good heavens. Those retired guys that get all the time.
Anything else?
You mean those retired guys do all the work? Is that what you're trying to say?
Absolutely.
Mr. Mansour also asked a question about the tree protection ordinance. And I would like to ask Mr. Mansour a question about the tree protection ordinance. And that is, has the township board, so that, to refresh everyone's memory, so the planning commission made some recommendations on the tree protection ordinance in terms of providing some waivers, providing for the tree protection fund, tree fund, giving some guidance as to how those funds should be spent to really maximize the value of both trees that are being preserved, trees that are being replaced, and trees in the community as a whole. And one of the, one of the suggestions that was made as that was going through to township board was to create maybe an ad hoc committee, or some sort of committee that would help direct those funds that were going into the tree, the tree fund, towards education, advocacy, direction of what, how to spend those funds, in terms of where trees would be replaced in the community. And I think that it would be really great to have that process in place to see, for the community to really see, and the businesses to really recognize the benefit of the ordinance, and the positive impact that we think it will have on the community in the long run. I guess that's sort of, I'm throwing it back to you.
So, so really, I think that's a thing we should look at, but the, the action really was more along, along the lines of connecting the tree ordinance to the authority of the township to actually enact that.
And the township absolutely does have the authority to do that through both the Planning Enabling Act and the provisions of the police powers of the township. And you'll, it's not something that the township just made up to do tree protection ordinances, and there are tree protection ordinances in many other communities, including Troy, Rochester Hills, I think you had asked a couple, Bloomfield Township, that's one of those ones that are coming to the top of my head right now.
Did part of this get a big focus when there was a bunch of just clear cut?
There was an entire subdivision that was completely clear cut, and that prompted the initial discussion 12 years ago. And that's why you'll recall, if you do, and if you don't, I think I have a copy of it, that the beginning of that ordinance outlines all of the reasons why the township felt that this was something that needed to have municipal action. So all the reasons why tree protection was important to the community.
So I guess I, so yes, in terms of, again, connecting, connecting the dots in terms of the, you know, the authority to do that, I guess if there's some, some documents that can kind of like create that trail, you know, the linkage between all those things, I suppose you'd like to have that, and then we can talk about, as you suggest, having a way to actually get some, I guess, benefit, or kind of show more broadly what the positive impact of a tree ordinance is.
Yeah, I think there's some really positive approaches that the township can use in both executing the purpose of the tree fund, so replanting. But I think also, education is really important, and I think teaching people, even in just residents, how to properly maintain the trees that they have, and how businesses can do the same, really about the value of trees and what they add to your property from an economic standpoint. And then also recognizing when a business comes in, and they've had to go through the process, they've replaced trees, that they were required to do so, to have some sort of a recognition. Maybe it's a plaque, "Thank you for your contribution to the trees of Gremlin Township," to make that something that they can look at and say, "You know what? This was a really, a really cool thing that we did." Or when they, they can't replace them on site, and so they donate to the tree fund, to let them know, "Hey, here's what we did." At the end of the year, you say, you let the community know, "We planted 200 trees this year in this place, this place, this place, and this place, thanks to contributions from the following businesses." There's a lot of ways that we can raise the awareness of that in a very positive way, and I think that's important.
Write letters of thanks for the trees.
You have anything else, Ms. Baim?
I think that was it. Oh, well, actually, I do have one more thing, because I think it's interesting, and it relates to the master plan. We're working with one of our other communities, Duitt Township, on becoming an age-friendly community. And that's something, maybe at a future meeting, I'll bring you some more literature on, or I'll send you a short article on it over the next month or so. But I think it's really, it's a good, it's a program through AARP, and I think it's a really good program in terms of its structure, in helping communities develop an action plan to accommodate people of all ages in the community. It's addressing housing, transportation lanes, a lot of things that we've talked about, and a lot of things that we've talked about specifically to different development proposals that we've seen even over the last year or so. So just a little highlight, preview of something that might be coming.
Sort of want to circle back to you.
So sure, so thanks for addressing the master plan, the, the tree ordinance, and this, obviously, this, the DAS topic has got a ways to go in terms of settling out before we're in a position to really do much about that. So that really leaves the trailer ordinance as the last item from, from our earlier discussion. And again, it was kind of, as I think I mentioned in the email...
And again, it was kind of, as I think I mentioned in the email, identifying kind of what's the trailer ordinance is that might, that are in surrounding communities, kind of how their enforcement's working, so that we can get one that, you know, if we have to make some modifications or anything to ours, we get one that creates the, you know, that we can live with and gets people to comply not only with what the letter, but the intent.
I've got a question about your, the trailer ordinances. We're talking about small or medium-sized trailers in driveways in residential areas.
Or, or boats, or recreational vehicles, or that.
I've noticed, well, first a question. The Township has, I believe, an ordinance has the location of fences, the fence locations on the furthest forward point they can be, which is the front of the house, front of the garage. I'm asking a question, or does anybody know the answer to the question? Because I've noticed something very much along this line.
Yeah, I'll have to look that up for you.
I've noticed in a, in a lot of subdivisions, there is a, an expanded use of side yards, usually on the garage side of houses, to pour like pieces of concrete from the front of the garage back, and they put motor homes, trailers, boats, and that's what we're talking about. Sometimes they have fences, and sometimes they don't have fences, but what actually constitutes the problem?
Is part of it, I'm guessing is perception, but there's a couple of things that come to mind. One is a Township, right now we have a Township-wide ordinance, but then you also have local association rules that could vary from that as well, that makes a, probably seeing more variance in how things are enforced.
Well, in a, in a, for example, psych condos, they'll usually address this, but in a standard subdivision.
A lot of times you don't have a.
Yeah, it's common. In Hidden Oaks and Chatham Square, there are, there's language about house sizes and that sort of thing, but that was never addressed, because at the time of those subdivisions development, this never, you know, it wasn't going on, but it is going on and going on more and more.
I would think in that case it would defer back to the general Township ordinance.
Right, I would expect that. Well, we talked about it, it was, we identified violations, but then who's going to follow up? Who's going to enforce them, and who's going, and what actually is a violation? For example, if we can't have RV vehicles on the property for only so many days, is that in the front of the house, or is that from the front of the house back?
Specified locations.
Yeah. It was trying to get them out, off the front, primarily out of the front, and in some cases off the side if it was a larger piece of property. But there's many, many violations of stuff parked in front.
Right. And the other issue is that there was a timeframe associated with it, that they could be, it was 48 hours.
Forty-eight hours?
Yes, and the issue was, when does 48 hours start? Which I think by policy, it's been when someone calls and complains about it, because otherwise you just can't possibly keep track of all of that. And then what does moved mean? So if you back it up to, you know, I'm on, I'm just, it's still a new 48 hours, so there was a concern about, this is very, very difficult to enforce.
And the staffing for code enforcement just wasn't there.
It isn't there full-time, Jack.
Yeah.
We still probably don't, I, not probably, we don't have the people to code enforce it.
We don't.
We only got two inspectors, that's just.
Which raises the question.
We only work four days a week.
An ordinance is really only as good as you're able to enforce it.
Correct.
And so if Planning Commission wanted to talk about it, it might be to consider zoning ordinance.
All right.
That goes back to.
Well, that would raise separate problems, because I mean, I think there are, a lot of people support the idea of not allowing, allowing people to park big RVs and campers and boats in the driveway, and if we repeal that portion of the ordinance, then they could park them there 24/7.
Yeah, and I think what we talked about was the, the proximity and the availability of homeowners associations to really more strictly regulate it, but then we recognize that that doesn't, not everybody in the community is covered by an HOA.
Right, right.
Well, that goes back to Al's previous comment about budget.
Right.
You know, and if we identify that and it, and it considered to be very serious, then we need to allow, you know, put budget in there so somebody can enforce it. Mr. Chairman, I have one more question for Ms. Bame, well, not Ms. Bame, it's really for the Commission. In talking about follow-up and homework and so forth, I'm reading from last meeting's minutes, which we approved earlier. Planner Bame recommended commissioners evaluate the appearance of signage along major thoroughfares, expressways, as it is easier to comprehend rather than on a sheet of paper, and let her know what they find offensive or positive. Has that happened?
That has not happened, but I did not send a reminder, so I'll do that. You'll get your reminder.
Don't apologize because you didn't send a reminder.
No, and it was interesting because.
We have responsibilities.
I didn't hear you go over that item on the agenda, it just never came up, that it was number two on our agenda, and we just discuss it, which was just as well, because I really.
I'm sorry, Commissioners.
I do think it helps to see things in real life, for example, the McLaren signage, when you saw it on an eight and a half by 11, and it looks to me like it's, told Mr. Brown that I thought they made the wrong decision, granted too much signage, until I went out and saw it, like, yeah, it's more appropriate for the size of that building.
Chairman Gelling, so just to conclude my report, so if we could have some timing around when we can get the follow-up on the, the tree ordinance and the trailer ordinance in the next couple of months or whatever, I think that would, that would, I would appreciate it, and so would the Township.
I can absolutely get you an overview memo that explains the regulatory authority of the Township to do the tree protection ordinance, as well as remind the Township Board of the strategies that we suggested to follow up with that. As for the trailers, I guess I'm at a little bit of a loss as to what exactly you're looking for.
I think we kind of threw our hands up, and so, how big is the problem? It seems to vary by subdivision, you know, what's not acceptable in this subdivision seems to be okay over here, kind of thing.
Yeah, and I don't know if the Township Board has discussed this any further, and what the consensus is from the Board. Do you, is this something that the Township Board wants to keep in the zoning ordinance? Or is the Township Board thinking there may be another way to better regulate this?
I think there's maybe something, something in terms of better, better way to regulate it, because there is not frequent, but regular communication from the public to the Board, complaints about neighbors with vehicles and boats kind of gaming the system, to your point, you know, if you move it six inches to the left for two days, and then six inches to the right, that kind of is the letter of the law, but not.
We've, we've taken some other things and put it into like the general ordinance and taken it out of the zoning ordinance, and so we didn't eliminate it, but made a suggestion that was removed, and it seemed to, Mr. Laddie had made some recommendations on some other things in the past, it seemed to allow the Township more flexibility in enforcement, so maybe that's where.
I can discuss that with him.
And other than that, I'm just looking for the FOP on those things, so no further from the Township Board, thank you.
That brings us, Ms. Bame, you were, you were all set, correct?
I think so.
Zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Brown?
Um, there, there was a meeting, I happened to be absent at that meeting, but they had one, one topic on the agenda, and that was the new Starbucks that we had approved over on Hill Road and Fenton Road, they were asking for additional signage on the drive-through area, as I recall, and it was deemed that they would not approve the additional signage, so it was denied by the petitioner's request.
Was that a wall sign they wanted?
It was, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
That's all there was.
Questions for Mr. Brown? Bring us to site plan review, we have not seen any site plans in the last month. Next item that we added was January Planning Commission meeting discussion. I'm talking with Maria, she said there really isn't anything currently scheduled for the agenda in January, and it sounds like the Sam's Club gas station won't be ready until February, so is there interest in canceling that meeting?
Unless you want to talk about the master plan, scope of work, and moving that forward to the Township Board, and signs.
We prob, I'm just gonna say, we probably should, because, you know, the Sam's, for February, you know, the agenda is, if we have the Sam's Club issue, it's going to take a lot of time, I think, and we don't want to get, we don't want to get like the master plan pushed to the end of an already busy agenda where it doesn't get the attention that it, and time that it really needs.
I think so, yeah.
What's, what's the feeling of the rest of the Planning Commission?
Fine with me.
The suggestion is having it, so that we can have that time to, to discuss the master plan.
So we should come back prepared to have comments on, yeah, I guess let's go.
And I'll remind you.
Pretend we're in fifth grade or something, we need reminders to finish our homework.
Okay.
If we're prompt all the time, the reminders will go away.
It's true. It just seems like life gets busier and busier, faster and faster.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, to Mr. Mansour, I had a neighbor ask me, she thought that she had read in the Gremlin View where there was a breakfast, public breakfast gathering out to Genesis Conference Center, where some of the folks from the Township were answering questions from the community. Was she just totally misinformed?
I, maybe Mr. Yacho can answer.
That was a Chamber of Commerce breakfast?
Chamber of Commerce.
It was a Chamber of Commerce, not anything to do with Township.
And if I recall, Nick Evans from Genesis spoke, and I don't know that anybody from the Township spoke, there were two people on the agenda, I planned to go, I didn't make it, but it was, they talked about Door Highway and Genesis Expansion, I think were two of the topics.
Oh, okay.
There?
Oh, okay, so that's what it was. I, I, what I was asking, when, I really don't know anything about that, obviously you didn't as well. Okay, thank you.
One question I have, Ms. Bame, maybe you can help, I had a resident ask at a gathering that Mr. Mansour actually heard the same request from this resident, she's very into the bike paths, she's very involved in bike paths, and hopefully I can remember what she, what her question was. I guess is Hill Road going to be getting some work done? She was mentioning Hill Road, they're going to redo some things. Her, her assumption, or what she had thought is when roads were done in the future, the bike path would be looked at if it was appropriate. She had someone talk to her when one didn't happen somewhere, and they said, well, it's got to be the master plan. Well, she's looked at the master plan, and it's there. So what, I guess her question to anybody that would listen is, how does one get the bike path in it? Like, if this Hill Road is getting done, and it's in the master plan, how do you get the bike path? Does the Township have?
Isn't that part of the Parks and Recreation Plan as well?
Well, it was part of the old pathways plan, that really should be updated, and we probably should include that, that transportation component in the master plan discussion, but your question is, who pays for it, I think, and it's Township. The road commission will pay for the road.
That's what she did say, she said, talking to the road commission, they gave, and I'm well aware of this, this reasoning, has, that their, their, their part is the engineering part.
Right.
Which is, um, so that's what they'll do, but then, so the Township would have to pay for it. So I guess, in the perfect world, if she wants a bike path, she needs to start going to the Township when these roads are being redone to say, hey, can we get this done? Is that?
Well, I think in a perfect world, the Township would be aware of the road improvement projects and would proactively.
That's not what she was saying, she, and again, this is her telling me this, I don't know this, though, Hill Road's getting some work done.
And that I don't know, but I can find out.
I've got a question there, what, what about the Iron Bell funding?
Yes.
For the pathway system right there, is that what she's thinking of?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I guess that's her point, it's like, is there, is there funding we're not getting, or is someone not applying for stuff, or is it, it just seems like things are getting, roads are getting done, and no bike paths getting done, and it should be, in her opinion.
Wait, are you talking about, are you talking about bike lanes in the roadway or pathways?
I think a pathway.
That's totally separate.
The answer is yes.
Didn't the Township, were we awarded monies from the state and the feds regarding the pathway system through the Township?
So.
I think the city might.
Yeah, so as part of the, the overall plan, and I believe the budget, we've got money to connect the portions of the Iron Bell that run through the.
That's what I thought.
The things, but, but what Commissioner Goldie is talking about is, is a broader topic in terms of, you know, increasing the amount of non-motorized paths as, and just taking advantage of the, the revisions and maintenance updates that the county does in the roads at the same time.
I was just thinking, maybe the resident was thinking of what I was, the Iron Bell.
I think, I think the one thing that remained issue was, is again, saying this Hill Road's getting done, I think she's asked somebody about putting the pathway, and her response, the response was, it needs to be in the master plan, and she's like, it is in the master plan, it's, it's here, so why isn't it getting done?
Well, and I think that that document is fairly old, and it seems like it, it didn't have the horsepower behind it necessarily to, to be on the radar maybe, so I, I think that is a really good point, and I'm glad that you brought it up, because that should go into our master plan conversation too.
Mr. Chairman? Before, before I make a motion, I would just like to share with the commissioners, as I was coming in this evening, going out with Mr. Bennett, and looking at the nice Christmas decorations in the lobby, I asked him, when can the Planning Commission expect to see their gifts under the tree? And he said, I'll have to work on them as soon as his are under there. I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Banderzki, Mr. Banderzki to adjourn the meeting, I heard support from Mr. Brown, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at eight forty-eight p.m.